Good evening. Welcome to the July 25 meeting of the Murfreesboro City School Board. We're certainly glad to have those of you in the audience with us tonight, and we're glad to have those that are at home watching on the Zoom TV program. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand as we have three new employees in Murfreesboro City Schools lead us in our pledge. John Pittard, Principal Dr. Kristi Robinson, new school safety supervisor Andy Taylor, and our new city school attorney Lauren Bush to lead us in our pledge. Ballot by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now our moment of silence. Tonight, we start according to Tennessee state law, a time in our meeting for public comment. Now, those people are invited to make their public comments to our school board at our meetings. We'll have a time set aside each meeting. Just go on the website and follow the guidelines, and then you can speak to us publicly. Do we have anybody tonight? I don't think so. All right. Now, we need to approve our agendas. Board members, you've seen a copy of the agenda, and it is lengthy, and I hope you've read it. At this time, I'd like to have a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Communications. Dr. Duke?
I am actually taking over communications. I'm going to come down a few minutes early tonight. Ms. Trail is at a school event that we have for Discovery School this afternoon, so she may be a few minutes late, which I hate she's not here because the only communications we have is to congratulate Ms. Trail and Ms. Carr. They have been named, receiving the National School Public Relations Association Award of Excellence for Merit in outstanding for their Take 20 program they've done. So this is, again, I know a few board meetings ago, we celebrated them winning the National Telly Award for the Take 20 program. This is another award they have won for that, so we wanted to congratulate them as well. But as far as our introductions tonight, I am pleased, I know you just met them at the pledge, to introduce a few people to the board, some new employees here in Murfreesboro City Schools. And I'm going to start with Dr. Kristi Robinson. As you know, I am excited to introduce to you Dr. Kristi Robinson as the new principal of John Pittard Elementary. She, of course, is no stranger to MCS. Dr. Robinson has been with MCS for 31 years. She began with our ESP program at Mitchell Nielsen Primary, taught kindergarten at Black Fox for 22 years, was the AP at Discovery for two years, and the assistant principal at John Pittard for six years, and I am thrilled to introduce her to the board as the next principal of John Pittard Elementary.
Yay. Woo. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Dr. Duke, for those kind words. Thank you, Board, for having me this evening, and I am so proud and excited to continue the work at John Pittard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our second introduction tonight is Mr. Andy Taylor, so I'm going to ask Mr. Taylor to come back up to the podium, if that's okay. Mr. Taylor is our new safety and security coordinator in Murfreesboro City Schools, and like Dr. Robinson, he is no stranger. He comes to us with over seven years of experience working with the Murfreesboro Police Department, where he served as an SRO protecting our schools. He has a total of over 10 years in law enforcement, and I think he said Monday was his first day, and the first day in what, 10 years, you got up and didn't put a gun on before coming to work? So, and we were thankful for that, but we are thrilled to have Mr. Taylor with us overseeing our safety and security program. Welcome, Mr. Taylor.
Thank you all for having me. I'm excited to be here. I'm excited for this opportunity, and, you know, excited to see what we can do going forward, and just want to thank everybody who gave me this chance.
Thank you, sir. We're glad, and we're excited to have you.
Absolutely.
Our final introduction tonight is, many of y'all met this weekend, Ms. Lauren Bush. Lauren is coming to us. She is formerly the staff attorney for Wilson County Schools. She also served as the staff attorney for Rutherford County Schools and in Sumner County. Her resume also includes a stint as deputy general counsel for the Tennessee Department of Education, and during her tenure in Wilson County, she also spent time serving as their deputy director of schools for policy and student services. We are thrilled to have Ms. Bush join us officially in the city. Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Bush.
Best of MCS.
Yes. As the school board is well aware, this summer, we have had so many teachers and administrators working to provide for an amazing summer school program that helped ensure our students had growth opportunities to prepare them for this new school year. Tonight, I am pleased to honor one of those teachers as our best of MCS recognition, which is the first one for our 23-24 school year, and I would like to ask Ms. Patty McCloy to join me at the podium. Ms. McCloy is one of our outstanding pre-K teachers here in Murfreesboro City Schools, and she will also be part of the team that will be opening our new Casey Lane pre-K annex in just a few weeks. She is starting her 24th year in education, and we are proud to say that she has been a member of the Murfreesboro City team since 2012. She has served as both a sixth grade and second grade teacher prior to moving into her current position, and that's a big jump going sixth grade to pre-K, and we appreciate that. Before coming into education, Patty said she had a number of careers as she searched for her true passion. She worked in sales, spent time in corporate America, and was even a flight attendant. However, no matter what she tried, she said she couldn't seem to find what she really wanted to do with her life. With her husband's encouragement, she went back to school to get her teaching certificate, teaching certification, and in August of 2000, she taught her first, fourth grade class in Houston, Texas, and she says she was hooked. I had the opportunity myself to spend some time in her summer school classroom last month, and I can easily say it was by far one of the best days I had all summer long. You could feel the positive classroom culture and climate when you walked in the door, and there was no doubt that each one of her pre-K students felt both, felt deeply cared for. She was preparing them for kindergarten, and they could not wait to have me sit down so they could show me how they could read and jump. There was a lot of jumping they showed. Clearly, the love for learning was stemming from the environment created by Patty. Ms. Dove, our pre-K instructional coach, told me that Patty is a phenomenal teacher, especially when it comes to early literacy skills. She incorporates foundational skills throughout the day. Her classroom read alouds, along with the level of higher order questioning and student responses, builds a foundation for future readers. She makes learning fun, which is very important for pre-K, and supports all areas of development through hands-on activities. Ms. Arnett told me that Patty is always putting students at the core, which is something we talk a lot about in Murfreesboro City. The perfect example of that is when, you may not know, that one of the new requirements with summer school was for the first time, we actually had to offer summer school for incoming kindergarteners, which we had never done before. So Ms. McCloy was who we asked to teach that class, and Sherry let me know that Patty realized early on she didn't have enough students in that classroom, and asked if it would be okay if she herself reached out to students and families to make sure we had more students coming to that pre-K classroom, and she did. It is this combination of care and commitment to students, along with the strong instructional knowledge, that makes Patty's classroom so successful. Patty told me she still marvels at the fact that she gets paid to do something that she loves so much, and we're happy to pay you, and we'll continue to do that. Each evening, her husband will ask her if she's had a good day, and most nights, she's able to respond the same, which is my days are always good. Patty told me that she loves the classroom because every day is exciting, new, and different, and she'd like to think that she can make a difference. Well, let me assure you, Patty, that you are definitely making a difference, and on behalf of our district, I want to say thank you for creating a culture that makes sure our students know they are known, safe, challenged, and empowered. We are so proud to have you in MCS, and there is no doubt that you represent the best of MCS.
Thank you, Dr. Duke. Thank you, everyone who says such fine things about me, and thank you, Board.
Spotlight on education, new teacher orientation. Ms. Arnett?
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I thought I would take a minute and just share with you a little bit of information about new teacher orientation that took place over Wednesday and Thursday of last week. So if you'll just give me a second, get the PowerPoint started, maybe? So on July 19th and 20th, at MTSU in the College of Education building, we met from 8:00 to 3:00 o'clock each day. We had about 90 new teachers in attendance each day, and the training sessions consisted of curriculum training in literacy and math, technology, CWFIT, which is a classroom management initiative, team building, class meetings, STEAM, creating positive classroom cultures, and training with our sped teachers, which this year, we served about 15 during these two days. And I can stand up here and just tell you all the great things, but it's really good when we hear from the voices of the teachers who actually attended. So Candace, you'll see the quotes from the teachers. Everyone at new teacher orientation was extremely warm and welcoming. All sessions were well structured, informative, and inspiring. I feel so much more confident and empowered to start my first year of teaching. So we welcome Candace to Casey Lane. And then we hear from April, who's going to be at Hobgood. The MCS new teacher orientation event made me proud to continue to be part of this accomplished school district. Every leader and presenter was well prepared and engaging. As a STEAM teacher, the instructional technology lab session was especially relevant and gave me new technology tools to use in the classroom. Samantha, who's going to be new at Salem, said at new teacher orientation, I felt supported and equipped to begin my teaching career as well as known. Being at MCS feels like a family. Avery from Hobgood was happy when I walked through the doors and was greeted so warmly by the MCS team. The instruction was extremely enriching, enriching, sorry, and personalized towards my needs as an educator. I feel that MCS strives for my success as much as I do for myself, and those things are the things that matter. And finally, Sierra from Discovery, even though I'm not a brand-new teacher, I felt like this was a very helpful experience. I've taught for five years in a different district, but I'm leaving orientation much more prepared for the expectations with MCS. I loved getting to meet the different instructional leaders, board members, and fellow teachers. So those are just some of the quotes from the teachers. I have just a couple of more slides. I want to show you just real quickly of some of the things that we did. Here's a group of, the whole group of us, when we finished up on the staircase, which I think is so cute. This, again, is, you have two photos here, but at the end of each day, we would come together and do a team building activity. This was one of the last ones that we did, and they had to form a tunnel, and I will tell you, that tunnel went on out into the hallway. There were so many of them. It was so much fun. That's that same tunnel. They had to dance down it. Some of them are pretty good dancers, I'll tell you. And then the very last day, on Thursday, this was probably for me, just the part that stood out the most. They had to answer the question, I have learned, I have been reminded, and I have been surprised, and that just really told the story of the past, of the two days they experienced, but a lot of joy, a lot of people really and truly excited about the new school year, and we're so happy to have them. So with that, that's kind of a little wrap-up of new teacher orientation, and while I'm up here, I did just want to share with you some things that our teachers have been doing over the summer. We had 27 teachers participate in Gifted Academy. 25 just finished up, two weeks ago, literacy training with Dr. Pressnell, specifically for our 3th through 6th grade teachers. That was amazing. The feedback's just been phenomenal from that. Project Optimal that we did in partnership with MTSU around math and literacy, we had 37 participants in that. Again, feedback has just been tremendous. And then as of today, we did our MCS virtual PD conference, and we had over 350 teachers participate in that virtually. So we've had a great summer of PD and a great week or two days of getting ready for our new teachers to join us, so we're very excited about that. So I just wanted to share that with you. Any questions?
Thank you. And, of course, I had the opportunity to be with y'all for a few minutes Wednesday morning, and it was certainly a room full of smiles and anticipation, and it sounds like they had a great time, and our supervisory staff and all did a great job on leading those teachers, and I'm sure it's going to be a great year.
I think so. Good group, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on the agenda, consent items. Do I have a motion to approve the one consent item that we have?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Action items. Board policy 1.6000.
Yes, so...
Can we just do these all at once?
No, we cannot, unfortunately. I did not say much at the beginning, because I knew I was going to be talking to you guys quite a bit tonight. We cannot approve all of these at one time, because we're specifically waiving 1.600, so we can vote on these on first and final reading. Many of these policies, all of these policies are statutory in nature. Those changes are going to be required by state statute, so we do need to vote on them tonight on first and final reading. Your board policy 1.600 requires two readings of policy prior to the adoption of the policy. However, on matters of unusual urgency, as we have here tonight, and by an affirmative vote by a majority of the members of the board, the board may waive the second reading requirement and take immediate action to adopt new or revised policies. So we'll take that action first with the recommendation to be, to waive the second reading limitation of policy 1.600 to approve policies presented at the July 25 board meeting on first and final reading to ensure MCS is in compliance with all new state laws.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move for approval.
Thank you, sir. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if I may. Counsel, would it be fair to say it's because of the state legislature's actions that we have to change our own internal policy tonight to waive that reading?
The majority of the statutory changes took effect July 1st, so yes, that you would have to approve these policies in order to be in compliance with those specific laws before the school year started.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Ms. Moore?
Just have a quick comment that, just to let everyone know, many of us were at the summer law conference put on by the Tennessee School Boards Association this weekend, and I felt like that was perfect timing before reviewing all these, because we had a session on new laws, and so all this was just kind of expected and clear, and so it was good timing.
Okay. Mr. Ballard?
Just to be clear also, if we were going to do this waiving for all of the second readings, but if, as we go through these, if we have an issue where we need a second reading, that's okay, right?
Yes.
We're not overriding that.
You can, to the extent that you want to have a second reading of one of these board policies. What you would need to do is, when we get to that policy, to approve on first reading and reserve that second reading for the next board meeting.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Well, to be clear, I just want to make sure, most of these have already gone into effect. They have to by July 1st. Most of these new laws, correct?
Yes.
So a second reading would be after the year has started, correct?
Yes.
Sure.
So to the extent that there is an existing law that conflicts with board policy, we'd always go with what the law says. We want to comply with the law first and foremost. So it would depend on why we would delay that second reading, but I understand that that, there might be some language we want clarified on any of these policies. So the board always has the right to take two readings, to the extent that you don't feel comfortable with a first and final, you can delay that. Just know that to the extent a law applies, we will have to comply with that law.
Absolutely.
All right. We've had a motion and a second to approve policy 1.6000. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Policy 1.102.
Yes, so this, this policy is changing due to public chapter 114, which requires that high school equivalency credentials approved by the State Board of Education be accepted as proof of high school completion for board members. The recommended changes to this policy amend the qualifications section to comply with the changes made by that state statute. Footnotes to the statutes have also been updated. The recommended approval would be to approve changes to board policy 1.102 on first and final reading.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Settles.
I move for approval.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Any question or comment? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 1.106, code of ethics.
Public chapter 37 requires local boards of education to notify the Tennessee Ethics Commission of the primary person responsible for enforcing ethical standards. A section has been added to this board policy to establish the board chair as the point of contact. Congratulations, Mr. Campbell, for the Tennessee Ethics Commission. The update to this policy requires Director of Schools to report the contact information to the Tennessee Ethics Commission by January 1st, 2024, and within 30 days of any change to the board chair. The recommended approval would be to approve changes to board policy 1.106 on first and final reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 1.406. 1.400.
That's okay. Mr. Campbell, I got you. Public chapter 350 creates additional opportunities for board members to attend board meetings electronically. Now, board members will be able to use this method of attendance for two additional reasons. One, if they are sick or in a period of convalescence on the advice of a healthcare professional, and two, due to inclement weather. The recommended changes to board policy 1.400 incorporate those additional opportunities for board participation. The recommended, the recommendation would be to approve changes to board policy 1.400 on first and final reading.
All right. We have a motion to approve the policy change.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. 1.401.
Public chapter 300 now requires that each board meeting with actionable items on the agenda is required to have time dedicated to public comment. The law allows boards to establish reasonable restrictions on the length of the comment period and length of time per speaker. In addition to this public chapter, Murfreesboro City Council has adopted resolution 23-r-23 on June 15, 2023, and set public comment requirements for the public meetings of the city's commissions, boards, and committees that are comprised of elected and/or appointed officials and subject to the Tennessee Open Meetings Act. To note specifically, though, teacher disciplinary hearings are exempted from those requirements. The proposed amendments to board policy 1.401 establishes the following guidelines regarding public participation during the public comment period. Individuals will be allowed three minutes to speak with respect to an action item on the agenda. The total public comment period shall be for no more than 15 minutes. Individuals wishing to address the board must sign up at least six hours prior to the meeting through email or phone call, and individuals should state the action item about which they wish to speak and whether they will be speaking in support or in opposition to the item. These recommended changes to board policy 1.401 comply with the requirements of public chapter 300 and Murfreesboro City Resolution 23-r-23. The staff recommendation would be to approve the changes to board policy 1.401 on first and final reading.
I have a motion to approve the change in policy 1.401.
Moved to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 1.402.
1.402 changes also track public chapter 300. It now requires that notice of board meetings include information on how individuals may provide public comment on agenda action items. Additionally, Murfreesboro City Council has adopted a resolution 23-r-23 and set requirements for public meetings of the city's boards. The recommended changes, changes to board policy 1.402 comply with the requirements of public chapter 300 and resolution 23-r-23. The staff recommendation would be to approve the changes to board policy 1.402 on first and final reading.
I have a motion to approve the change.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. 3.202.
Public chapter 367 requires that schools conduct an incident command drill and an emergency safety vest drill in addition to the currently required armed intruder drill. The changes to board policy 3.202 comply with the requirements of public chapter 367. The staff recommendation would be to approve the changes to board policy 3.202 on first and final reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Richardson?
Would it be a fair statement to say that the incident command drill is a, an opportunity for the different departments to coordinate in preparation of some sort of challenge or disaster that may happen at some point in the future?
That is correct, and in fact, the law actually states that it needs to be done without students there, so we are already working with both Murfreesboro Police Department and Murfreesboro Fire and Rescue and Rutherford County Emergency Management to have this drill completed before students ever return for the first day.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Duke. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Any other question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 3.204.
Public chapter 367 now requires that school districts have a policy on threat assessment administration. Board policy 3.204 is a new policy recommendation that complies with the requirements of public chapter 367 and Tennessee state law relative to threat assessments. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to board policy 3.204 on first and final reading.
I have a motion to approve the change in policy 3.204.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 3.206, security.
Public chapter 367 requires that all schools lock their exterior doors during school hours, as well as when students are present outside of regular school hours for school-related purposes or activities. Board policy 3.20- purposes or activities. Board policy 3.205 is amended to require that all exterior doors leading into a school building be locked at all times during the school day and during after-school activities when students may be present. The updated policy requires that a school district employee be stationed by an unlocked door during a school activity occurring after-school hours to ensure access to the school is limited to authorized persons only. The staff recommendation would be to approve the changes to board policy 3.205 on first and final reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Any question or comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Richardson?
Is this a substantive change from our current policy or merely just a restatement to conform with the statutes?
It is a restatement to conform with the statute. We do have an administrative directive on this, this point. We will be looking at our administrative directive, but the statute was rewritten to comply with that. I will say that the, the school board does have latitude to determine what, how we operate doors after, during after-school hour activities, but we did discuss, and what we recommend tonight made the most sense as far as having someone man the door and to ensure that those coming in or out are authorized to do so.
And to further clarify, our current administrative directive, which has been in place, has already required the locking of external doors. So that is, we, this policy puts a policy, as you said, in line with state law. It doesn't change our practice. Our practice has been the same, and one of the things that our SROs do on a regular basis is actually exterior door checks several times during the day. So this, again, I, thank you for pointing this out, although for the public, it may be changing our policy. It is not changing our practice. That practice has been in place.
Thank you, Council. Thank you, Dr. Duke. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other question? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. Policy 4.300.
Public chapter 353 now requires parents or guardians to opt in to allow their child to participate in a club or extracurricular activity. An opt-out model is not allowable under the law. The recommended changes to board policy 4.300 comply with public chapter 353, and the staff recommendation would be to approve changes to board policy 4.300 on first and final reading.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Thank you, sir. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 5.106.
Public chapter 222 clarifies that school districts may not hire individuals who appear on abusive vulnerable persons lists maintained by other states that are similar to the Tennessee DCS Service list of perpetrators of child abuse in the Tennessee Department of Health Registry of Abuse of Vulnerable Persons. The recommended changes to board policy 5.106 are made to comply with the requirements of public chapter 222. The staff recommendation will be to approve changes to board policy 5.106 on first and final reading.
Mr. Chairman, I so moved.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Policy 5.1061.
Public chapter 425 offers additional flexibility in hiring retirees. The recommended changes to board policy 5.1061 allows retirees to work as substitutes beyond the typical 120-day contract and permits retirees to serve as regular classroom teachers on an ongoing basis in compliance with the language included in that public chapter. Under this option, the retirement benefit payable to the retired member is reduced to 70% of the retirement allowance. The, the staff recommendation would be to approve the changes to board policy 5.1061 on first and final reading.
I have a motion to approve the policy change.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Ballard. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? While this person, this teacher is, is hired, that's what I'm gonna say, did they still get any retirement benefits?
Yes. It's just reduced, it's a reduced percentage of their retirement benefits, but they, they continue to remain eligible for those retirement benefits. Now, I will say career ladder was removed from this policy. The state board only allows career ladder up until the time of retirement for, for a teacher, so that would not be a benefit that would be payable under our policy currently or under the state board rule.
Okay, thank you.
If I might add, Mr. Chair, and this has been a, a policy that went into effect last year with us being able to hire retired teachers, that we took advantage of. This year, the state has really kind of given us more flexibility. Ms. Johnson, and I believe we're taking advantage of this this year, and we actually have some retired teachers who are coming back. Is that correct?
Yes, we have one retired teacher that's gonna work the entire school year, and then we have four that are completing interims throughout the school year.
So we just want to say thank you to our retired teachers, and if there are other retired teachers who would like to get full teacher pay while also receiving reduced retired benefits, we'd be happy to have a, Ms. Johnson, I know would be happy to have a conversation
I would be delighted to have it.
Now, wait a minute. The retired teacher gets full retirement pay or full teacher pay?
They get teacher pay, and then they're, in addition to their 70% of their retirement benefits.
Yeah.
And then 70% of their retirement benefit.
Yes. Would you like to come back, Mr. Campbell?
I was gonna say, he's asking for a free.
He's doing the math.
No, I meant asking, I just asked him because that was brought up to me last year, and I didn't understand it, but now I do. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I appreciate you.
I, I will say too that this also extends to school best drivers, so if there are any retired school best drivers listening.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of the policy change say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Thank you. There is none. Policy 5.305.
Public chapter 399 gives employees who are required by law to hold a valid license of qualification for employment and who have been employed with the school district for at least 12 consecutive months, six weeks of paid leave that can be used after the birth, stillbirth, or adoption of a newly placed minor child. This leave must be used within 12 months of the qualifying event and does not have to be used consecutively. Additionally, this leave counts toward federally granted leave under the FMLA. The recommended changes to board policy 5.305 comply with the requirements of the public chapter 399. And I will say too, we did speak with the state today. We do have guidance that is forthcoming. We hope within the next couple of weeks. So that will be, our policy shouldn't change, but practice and procedure may. But the staff recommendation here would be to approve changes to board policy 5.305 on first and final reading.
Thank you. Motion to approve the change.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor of the policy change say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 5.307.
Public chapter 343 clarifies that teachers will receive their full salary while in leave due to a physical assault that sustained, that was sustained during their course of their employment duties. The recommended changes to board policy 5.307 comply with the requirements of public chapter 343. This is a practice we've already been implementing as a district, and the staff recommendation would be to approve changes to board policy 5.307 on first and final reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And I see none. Thank you. Policy 6.202.
Public chapter 114 requires the acceptance of GED, HSET, and other high school equivalency credentials approved by the State Board of Education and allowing a parent teacher to conduct a homeschool. Additionally, public chapter 296 removes a requirement that parents of homeschool students provide proof of immunization. The recommended changes to board policy 6.202 comply with the requirements of public chapter 114 and public chapter 296. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to board policy 6.202 on first and final reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 6.309, zero tolerance.
Public chapter 299 adds an additional zero tolerance offense to state law. Threats of mass violence on school property or at a school-related activity as defined by TCA 39-16-517 has been added to the list of offenses punishable by a one-year expulsion. The recommended changes to board policy 6.309 are in compliance with public chapter 299. Updates will be made to the parent handbook to reflect changes in law and policy. The staff recommendation will be to approve changes to board policy 6.309 on first and final reading.
I have a motion to approve the policy change.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Any question or comment? Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Does this apply to only those youths that have been charged under that statute or have conformed to their conduct to the statutory language of threats of mass violence?
It would be a conformance to the Tennessee Code Annotated Criminal Code, not necessarily that they have been charged. The SRO would not have to charge in order for us to consider a threat of mass violence as a zero tolerance, and I do believe that the director of schools is going to work with Ms. Trail to put out a statement to parents to make them aware that this is a violation of the law.
And I think that's one of the things we want to be really cognizant of, you know, especially working with elementary age students, and the law doesn't specify age. And, and we know unfortunately in recent times, we've actually seen some school violence happen at younger and younger ages than we've seen before. So we always want to take every threat seriously. Mr. Roach's team has, of course, with Ms. Adams last year, a strong threat assessment process that we go through, but we also want to be really proactive with our parents and start making sure they understand, we, we need your help in having conversations about words we do say at school and what we don't say at school, and helping our parents and families understand that there are very real consequences now codified in state law of what could happen if students make threats against other students in the school. And I think specifically with this law, it does quantify mass violence as impacting two or more students. And so, you know, again, we want to be really aware of our students and make sure we're meeting their needs, but we also want parents to be aware of, how can you help us at home, making sure you're having conversation with your families about what we do and what we don't say at school.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes. I have a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposition? There is none. Thank you. 6.4001, surveys.
Public chapter 353 requires parents and guardians to opt in before a minor child participates in a non-instructional survey, analysis, or evaluation. Previously, board policy in law only required parent notification with the option to opt out. The recommended changes to board policy 6.4001 comply with the requirements of public chapter 353. The staff recommendation will be to approve changes to board policy 6.4001 on first and final reading.
I have a motion to approve the policy change in 6.40001.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. 6.402.
Yes, we've made it to the end, so thank you for sticking with me here.
Ma'am?
So we've made it to the end of that, of that list. So here, here we go. Public chapter 353 gives parents and guardians the ability to opt out of health screenings conducted as part of the coordinated school health program. The recommended changes to board policy 6.402 comply with the requirements of public chapter 353. The staff recommendation would be to approve changes to board policy 6.402 on first and final reading.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Have any question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, approval of school resource officer memorandum of understanding.
Yes, sir. During the last General Assembly, the Tennessee General Assembly passed public chapter 367. Part of this law established the statewide school resource officer program to provide funding to local law enforcement to place one full-time SRO in every K-12 public school. A requirement of obtaining the grant funding is to enter into a program-specific MOU as outlined by the Department of Safety. Although we already have an SRO in every school, and we're very thankful for MPD for providing that, this grant will provide the Murfreesboro Police Department with funding not to exceed $75,000 a year per school to help, to assist in offsetting that cost. Additionally, we are recommending a second MOU which contains information specific to our partnership between Murfreesboro City Schools and the Police Department. The second MOU is similar to previous ones that have been adopted by the board, and we are recommending approval as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve the school resource officer memorandum of understanding?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Any question or comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Approval of architect agreement?
We are presenting the attached agreement with Johnson and Bailey Architects to provide full architectural services for a brand-new Mitchell-Nelson playground project, which we are very excited about. This project was previously approved by the board as part of the district's five-year capital improvement plan. The city of Murfreesboro guidelines require that anything that is structural, changes the grading, or drainage, or include land disturbances must be designed by an architect or engineer. The proposed fixed fee for this service is $31,448. The total construction budget for this project is estimated at $400,000, and it is being funded through our ESP program, and we are recommending approval as presented.
We have a motion to approve the agreement of the architect.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard. Any question or comment? This is the playground at the elementary school, right?
Yes, sir, and if you're, I know you're all familiar with it. The current playground is really right there on the corner of that street and not in the best location. This puts it actually, Mr. Bryson, I major helper, Mr. Barch behind the school in more behind, in a more closed-off location, which we're really excited about, and it is modeled, if you saw the plans and the agenda after what was put at Salem, which was the last school we're open, so it's gonna be a great new addition to that faculty. Our long-term plan will be, once that is constructed, then we'll be able to take the current playground and put some additional parking, which also is very much needed at the school.
I, I remember this project from a while back. I'm glad it's finally getting some legs and some steam, so I'm definitely in support of this. I'm ready to move on it.
Question?
Question, Ms. Ballard?
So this is in the 2324 capital budget?
It's actually funded through our ESP budget. It's on the list of capital projects. It won't take a budget amendment because we knew the board had already approved the project, so we budgeted it in the, this budget. So the, the money is there. It doesn't take a budget amendment. We're just approving the actual services now.
Okay, and what is our ETA on this?
The timeline that's presented, and Mr. Barch, I don't know if you want to speak to the exact timeline?
We're in the early stages of development because we gotta look at the layout and drainage and those types of things. We have met with the plan we're looking at, so it is going forward.
Johnson and Bailey's timeline that they have in the actual agreement had a goal of having it completed, I'm pulling it up right now, by March, which is late, but the big concern we're looking at is the procurement of the playground equipment and how much time it's gonna take for that to come in. So if that comes in sooner, we'll move sooner, but they will, as of tomorrow, as soon as this is approved, tomorrow Johnson and Bailey will start working on the bidding documents to put that out to bid, and then it's just a, that will stay open for roughly about two weeks. Is that correct, Ms. Williams? Usually?
Yes.
And then at that point, it'll be how quickly we can award the bid and how quickly we can get the equipment, the actual playground equipment in, and that lead time can vary. But this school year, we will hopefully have that in place.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right, student field trips.
Yes, sir. Board policy 6.709 states that prior to the start of each school year, the board, upon recommendation of the principals and directors of schools, shall approve all known student fees for the upcoming school year. Additional fees may be approved as needed throughout the year. We are recommending that the board pre-approve student field trip fees up to $20 per student for the upcoming school year. By pre-approving these costs, it will decrease turnaround time and allow schools to begin collecting funds immediately after central office approval of a standard field trip. Field trips beyond the $20 per student limit will still be approved individually at the next board meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'm moved for approval.
Thank you, sir. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. All in favor, I'm sorry, question or comment? I see none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Federal Stronger Connection Grant.
Yes, I am just thrilled to be recommending this to the Board tonight. Murfreesboro City Schools, and a huge shout-out to Ms. Adams back there for her strong work with this last year, applied for and was awarded the state's Stronger Connection Grant in the amount of $1,105,338 over the next three years. The district will use these funds to focus on the areas of mental health and social-emotional learning for students, families, and educators. Using these funds, we will increase support for mental health by hiring seven COME coaches to assist with meeting the behavioral needs of students and provide professional development through Best LLC and Stars of Nashville. These seven COME coaches will be in addition to the four that the Board approved in the FY24 general purpose budget so that more schools receive this support. And we are recommending approval of the grant and budget amendment.
We have a motion to approve the grant.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? Yes, ma'am.
I was just going to say, I'm so glad. We really wrestled with this during the budget meetings and how, and knowing this was out there, but we weren't sure we would get it, and how much can we squeeze out of our budget to make it so we can stretch this across as many schools as possible. So it's just, I was so excited to see this all came through and the plan came together, so.
Yeah, I had one comment, but as you were talking, I came up with another one. The comment I was going to make was going to be yippy, and when you were talking, I thought I'd add a yahoo to it.
That's fair.
That's it.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
Yahoo.
Woo?
I don't know. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Yahoo. FY24 general purpose budget.
Yes, sir. This is a United Way grant. We were, the Murfreesboro City Schools was awarded a grant by United Way of Rutherford and Cannon County in the amount of $51,500. Funds from this grant will be used to provide therapeutic materials for the COME centers at each school that will be staffed by this person that was, we just approved. And I want to say specifically while I can, a thank you to the United Way. They have been an incredibly strong partner with us. When we think about the positions that we'll now have in every school, last year, we piloted that at Casey Lane through a grant that United Way provided for us. So their partnership allowed us to pilot that, to really work out some of the, any issues we may have, to figure out the best program, and to use United Way funds to help provide those services at Casey Lane. Now to see us be able to expand that to all of our schools, and then for the United Way to step up and support us by now funding the materials that those COME coaches will use to help work with students, again, just a great partnership we have with United Way. And we are so blessed to have just a great United Way organization here in Rutherford County.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you.
Did we do a motion?
No, we don't have a motion.
We don't have a motion? All right.
I so moved.
Thank you. I knew we would.
I second.
I've got a motion and a second. Now, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
Still no.
No. Thank you. All right. Nutrition budget grant.
The Finance Department is seeking a Board approval to appropriate $100,000 of new revenue in the FY24 School Nutrition Fund for the USDA Local Food for Schools Cooperative Grant. These grant funds will be budgeted in the food supplies category to purchase domestic, locally grown foods from local producers, small businesses, and socially disadvantaged farmers, which is a requirement of the grant, and we are recommending approval as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Settles. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Any question or comment? Do we have a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. All right. Federal grant?
Yes. The federal AALN, or Access for All Learning Grant, is from the Department of Education that we applied for and were awarded. This grant focuses on empowering districts to ensure access to high-quality literacy and math instruction for students with disabilities. The grant will allow the district to provide opportunities for general and special education teachers to collaborate around unit and lesson preparation. This assists in units and lessons being adapted for individual student need. We were awarded funds in the amount of $50,000 for this first year of implementation. It will extend over four years, and we will use these funds to pay stipends to participants for participating in the training. And we are recommending approval as presented.
We have a motion to approve the grant.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. We have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. All in favor say, I'm sorry, question or comment? There is none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition?
No.
And there is none. Thank you. Just a budget amendment.
First Board meeting of FY24, and we are already adapting our budget, which again is usually something we don't like to do, but in this case, we're very excited to do. The Finance Department is seeking Board approval to appropriate $300,000 in new revenue in our FY24 General Purpose Schools Fund budget. This additional $300,000 is because in early July, we received our final allocation from the state for the NUTESA funds, and it was, again, approximately $300,000 more than we had originally budgeted. The amendment budgets additional funds and additional salaries for a full-time behavioral COME coach, so this final COME coach will ensure every school has one for next year. Transfers funds from previously approved legal services line to the salary and benefits line for our staff attorney. Also increases funds in our workers' compensation line item. It also provides additional support and payroll in our central office warehouse, which are some operational needs that we had not previously included in the budget due to our focus on making sure those behavioral supports were there for students. Additionally, if you remember to help make the behavioral positions happen before, we actually moved coordinated school health to school nutrition. Because we received this extra additional funds, we're actually going to move those positions back to GP where it's a really more appropriate place for them because we now have this money, additional funds. So we are recommending approval of this budget amendment as presented.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Have a second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Settles. Any question or comment? All in favor, I'm sorry, yes, sir?
I was just going to say, thank you, and I appreciate the hard work that always goes into our budget preparation. And this is one of those times that we are really, really, really excited about the fact that, I mean, the hard work is just paying off. And thank you for, well, thank you, State of Tennessee, for this extra $300,000.
I will say, the credit really goes, we are thankful for it, to, again, our attendance team and those that are, again, with the NUTESA funding. It's making sure we are accurately accounting for every student every day. And Ms. Pilgrim, Tyra Pilgrim, in our attendance office, as well as Dr. George with ESL, Melissa Snyder in special education, and Ms. Shealy in school nutrition have worked really hard to make sure that we have our data correct and accurate, and this is what happens when that is done.
It's kind of like they sniff out money. I love this. This is really good.
You have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And there is none. Thank you. Revenue and expenditure report. Ms. Williams?
Yay, Ms. Williams.
Thank you. Thank you, Board. Before you tonight, we have our standard three-page presentation of financial, summary of financial information. June is that very unique time of year that any information we capture today will be different tomorrow. We are still in the process of closing out our fiscal year-end for this past year. I believe today we ran our final June payroll, so we will start settling down on our expenditures and have a little bit more accurate information. This is an estimate. It's not our final amounts. We still have an audit to contend with, so some of the additional revenues and funds that we will add to fund balance will be adjusted for audit purposes. One thing I do want to draw to your attention is the estimates on the revenue side. If you look at your revenues on the property tax, we came in just under budget, really close. Our sales tax, we're coming, we're going to be receiving more than we actually budgeted this year. We just yesterday received our May sales tax of 1.4 million, and that was what we estimated. So we've got one more coming in for June, so we will be receiving more sales tax than we actually budgeted. So that contributes greatly to those additional dollars that will add to fund balance this year.
Might I add, Ms. Williams, if you're looking at that revenue comparison page, I just do want to point out, on that first line of current property tax, you will see, if you go back a year, as it says, '21-'22, our year-to-date revenue in June of '21-'22 was $16,240,000. You can see for '22-'23, that year-to-date revenue is $14,952,000. And again, that decrease goes back to that movement of the penny, which we have talked quite a bit about, so you can kind of see that in action there. Again, when we knew that was happening, we went back and amended that budget to take it down to $15 million. And as you can see, Ms. Williams did a pretty good job of estimating and came very close to that estimate. As the Board is aware, more pennies were moved again this year, and so we will see how that plays out over the next year. Our hope is that, as we did this year, we'll be able to make up that local maintenance of effort through the increase in local option sales tax, which you can see is coming in stronger than we had budgeted, again, because we budget those revenues so conservatively. But I did want to point that out because, again, I think there's a really clear picture of the impact that that has had over a two-year period.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, one, I don't think you did a pretty good job. I think you did an excellent job. But my question is, with this dataset that we have now, are we able to project into the future what these penny, the changes in the pennies might?
Yes.
Where the dollars and cents may be for us in the future?
Yes. We will, we anticipate well over a million-dollar drop in local, in current property tax. We're watching sales tax, and we've had this conversation before with sales tax, and it is, it's staying pretty consistent, and, not but, but and, we, it's definitely about 2% lower than it was this time last year. That 2% does, it's a significant dollar amount for us. So we're looking at, you know, a couple of million dollars that could make a huge difference in our local maintenance of effort.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
When do we make all these facts known to the general public about these pennies we're losing?
We've been making it known along the way, and I think that's the conversation we've had, is, but most of the time, we don't officially find out about it until the County Commission votes on it at the end of June. So there's been conversation along the way to determine if this were to happen. And then when it does happen, we've been able to, because we have budgeted so conservatively, and, but I think it really is having conversations like Dr. Duke has had with our County Commission, our County School Board, and our City Council, and to the school board members here as well, to let them know that for a school district the size of Murfreesboro City Schools, pennies, it may sound, you know, not a lot of money, but pennies off the property tax could mean for us well over a million dollars.
And so just, kind of to add on to that, because I think there have been all these conversations, but it's such a wonky, really nitty-gritty topic. I don't know that the public really gets it, so I'm going to try to just make a real quick summary. These pennies were moved by the county from a pool of funds that is shared between the county schools and the city schools.
Yes.
Into a category that is no longer split.
Yes.
Between them. And so that is why we lose out when the county makes this move of pennies.
Yes. So the County Commission can vote to move those pennies into debt service, into another education fund, into the County General Fund, any number of funds. And so we have a very small pot of money that's actually shareable between the county schools and the city schools. So yes, good summary.
But we are still educating the same percentage number of students that live within Rutherford County in Murfreesboro City Schools.
Yes.
And every one of those city school students are county school students.
That's right. True.
So we will start, and we will continue having this conversation and talking about it, keeping you informed, so that when and/or if this change does continue, then these local dollars, especially the local dollars that we monitor so closely compared to the state dollars, which are consistent, the city allocation they give us every month, that is consistent. So the inconsistency and the projection and the guess will be, it's not really a guess. It's a series of calculations.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Absolutely.
And we will have final numbers for June, but it's more than likely going to be in November. We'll keep you informed along the way.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move for the approval of the revenue and expenditure report if we need one.
I'll second it if we need to.
We got it. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? There is none. Thank you. All right. Reports and information.
All right. Mr. Barch is going to start by providing the Board an update on our capital improvement projects that we've been working on through the summer. Mr. Williford and his team have really just, they've been, they've been doing an excellent job with some really great projects. So he's going to take a moment, and he's going to kind of update the Board there.
Bear with me for just one second. Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Here we go. We got, from here on out, I'm going to try to do a better job of having before and afters. It's, I think, is something new that we're going to, that I want to implement. But you should see the Irma Segal before and after of the resurfacing and really adding a whole lot to that surface.
Incredible.
Isn't that incredible?
Beautiful.
It's just absolutely beautiful.
Looks like one of those, like, rendered designs.
Yeah, it looks fake.
Yeah.
It's not Photoshop. It's clear. Yeah, it's beautiful. And then, oh, let's enter. Here we go, and that's Casey Lane.
Wow. What kind of surface is that, Don?
It's a, it's a plastic grid-type surface that is just supposed to be real durable, and it helps it drain and all kinds of, it's very common now, actually using, everywhere I've seen, when they're adding, making tennis courts or those types of things, they're adding it now instead of the old-style asphalt.
So it's put down in sheets?
It's a grid, yes, sir.
Okay, and then they are painted?
Well, they can be, they can be pre-colored.
Yeah.
Okay.
So then, what also is great about it is if it gets damaged, they can just replace that part.
That's nice.
Instead of, we got to resurface the whole court, we can just fix part of it.
That's right.
Good. Thank you.
Anyway, so that's, that's two fantastic things that have been going on. And I got a list, and I'm going to run through of all the things that we've been doing this summer. Yeah, school's not been in session except for summer school, but there are several, it's been like a beehive. It's just crazy. So Reeves Rogers, lots of painting, classrooms, halls, all kinds of, you know, good little facelift for Reeves Rogers. That's been going on. We resurfaced four playgrounds, so a lot of work going on there. And that's done. That's completed. The, we were able to paint and get different crews in to help paint Mitchell Nielsen Primary Lobby and foyer area, and they did such a great job, they were going down a hall. So it's, and I was over there the other day, and it's just fantastic. It's amazing what a little coat of paint will do. The four new gym dividers, Casey Lane overall, I think Hopgood, and then there's one more I can't think of right off the top of my head. That's getting a whole big divider curtain. Those wear out after a while. There are also, kids like to swing on them, so they, they wear out.
Yes.
The roof is one of the bigger projects that we've been doing, the replacement of Mitchell Nielsen Elementary. Mr. Campbell talked at our meeting yesterday about it looking like a war zone. Now it's about done. And knock on wood, this is one of the first times I've done a lot of construction projects. We're actually a little bit ahead of schedule.
Wow.
Yes. Yeah. Hold your breath. Hold your breath. We're trying to get Mr. Bryson and his teachers in there as fast as we can. There's also hope for some planned painting at the, in the lobby of Mitchell Nielsen, depending on when we can get in and get that. depending on when we can get in and get that. There's still a little work going on in the lobby and the main hall. Also, big project, which has been really neat for me to kind of come in on, is the Kason Lane preschool. And that, to see the, the act, the city and everybody all working together. It's, right now, it's, it's a, I mentioned a beehive, it really is over there. They're working on the parking lot, and they're pulling up playground, they're, they're cleaning air duct, they're painting. So there's a lot going on. It's gonna all, they're, we're real close on that as well, of that coming in. They, the teachers should be able to hopefully move in on noon Monday. All right, so that's what we're shooting for on that.
Could I interrupt you, but can you want to tell them what we're referring that building to? How are we referring to it?
I have it on my notes. It's 930 Kason Lane.
930 Kason Lane.
930 building, the 940 building is gonna sail them out.
We know 940.
I purposely held that out for Ms. Trail, because she doesn't like that, but anyway. Also, I gotta brag on the maintenance department and the technology department. They have really been strapped with all of these things, but then when little projects come in, a little, you know, we're not ready for a school to be done early when it comes to construction. So then Larry and his crew, and Mrs. Avisa and her crew have really been jumping in, trying to help out and get Mitchell Nielsen going, and while everything else is going on. And so that has just been really, really interesting, really cool to watch. I wish you could see how that, how these guys from behind the scenes keep these teachers going and get these buildings open. It's fascinating, and that's our goal. Keep the teachers going, and that's what we want to do. So, thank you, and any questions?
I just want to thank the city again for their cooperation in procuring that, that preschool site. It's just going to be an extraordinary resource for the community, and I'm very, very excited to see that up and running. And thank you for everything you've gotten done in getting this school year ready for our kiddos and our MCS family. So thank you.
If I might add with that pre-k building, to echo again, the work the city has done to help with this project has really been astronomical there. We've been meeting with them every Wednesday out there with the, to, again, the whole building's been painted. Cabinets have been replaced, floors have been repaired. And Ms. Trail, if you can remind me, I think we're gonna have a ribbon cutting that will be letting the board know about the, toward the middle to the end of August, once we get teachers in there and get that room set up so the board and the city council can come out and see that, that all the improvements that are happening in that building. So we're really excited. And I will also add to what Mr. Barch said about Reeves Rogers with the painting of those classrooms. Every classroom was painted, so walk through Reeves Rogers, it just looks fantastic. And Ms. Hardman and I walked the building the other day to see every classroom get that fresh coat of paint. And then also, if, if you've been in Reeves Rogers, you know that they also had some of the old open classrooms as well. And I think as of this year, Mr. Williford and his team finally have closed that in, so we have no more open classrooms in the district. So all the ones at Mitchell Nielsen Primary have been closed, and now all the ones at Reeves Rogers have been closed. So we're excited to have all those done. So really great work going on, and I would encourage the community, not just to go look at the schools, but really drive by Kason, Kason Lane, Irma Segal. It's not just tennis courts now. There are basketball goals that have been hung. It looks beautiful, and Discovery School will be next year, and then we will finish the year after that with all of the tennis courts have been replaced.
All right. We have a director's update?
Just a few notes tonight I want to make the board aware of. Believe it or not, it has been an incredibly busy summer that is now coming to an end. Our principals are back every day. Our assistant principals are back. We had our beginning-of-the-year administrators meeting this, yesterday, in fact, welcoming them back. Our teachers and our educational assistants, as well as the rest of our traditional school year employees, will return on Monday. They have a full week of in-service and preparation this year, and students, their first half-day is August 7th. And the open house for our families will be Thursday, August 3rd, in the evening at all of our schools. So we're excited about that. It's gonna be a great year. I left yesterday's administrators meeting just full of continued optimism about the great things that are happening in this district and our leadership for, at our school levels. I also wanted to let you know that we will again be working with our new third-grade families to make sure they're well aware, and we stay communicating with them about the third-grade promotion law. We do know that even though we've been through it once, we gotta do it all over again with a new group of families and make sure they're well aware. As you heard this weekend, there have been some minor changes to the law, which gives us a little more flexibility, but the law is still very much at play. That being said, we will, just like last year, send a letter home with every third grader the first day of school. Our teachers will have information for them at those open house nights that they'll be able to share. And then I think last year, Ms. Trail, we had seven Zoom meetings throughout the course of the year for parents to join, including a couple in-person, and we will do those meetings again to make sure our new third-grade families are aware of that. I did want to share just a little bit of data with you as Dr. George has been working just tremendously to get this information out. We did have of our, I believe, around 1,400 total third graders, is that correct? Okay, I think 1,411 is sticking in my head, but I may be off there. Right at 60% of those third graders were promoted either because they were at proficiency or they qualified for an appeal. So they, 60% of our third graders will be moving on with no restrictions onto a fourth grade. Of our third graders that attended summer school, roughly 28% of those third graders that attended met the adequate growth standard on the end-of-summer-school assessment, which, again, you have to keep in mind, there's only 15 days, right, of summer school. So again, 30% met that adequate growth standard. I did talk to several other districts just to kind of see how our number compared, and for the two I talked to, we were either at or above what the other districts were. So I think that's gonna be a pretty common number looking there. I will say that we have about 313 or about 20% of our third graders who are being promoted but will be on the requirement of receiving tutoring during fourth grade. So we already have a plan for that. We discussed that with our principals yesterday. That tutoring will occur. Our plan is during the school day, so it's not gonna be before or after school. We're able to meet that requirement for that 20% of now-fourth graders who are required to have tutoring. And I will say, we had less than 1% of our third graders that will actually be retained, and that number is in the single digits. And I do also want to say that with some of those that are being retained, they were eligible for appeals, and the parents felt like it was best for their child to keep them back. Others in that number include some families that alerted us they'd be moving out of the state, and so they didn't go through summer school, but they're still on our roster as of right now, so we're counting in that number. But we are in the single digits of students that will actually be retained in third grade, although I think fewer than that will actually be in our school system next year. So I just want to give the board that information as well. Any questions regarding that? I have one other comment, or two others. Do want to say for the general public that may be watching, our enrollment verification process is going on right now. Even if you're a returning MCS student, or specifically if you're a returning MCS student, we still need you to go on and complete that enrollment verification process online so we can make sure we have all your updated addresses and phone numbers. And we've talked a lot about school safety and drills tonight. I will say that next, next week, our teachers' first week back, every school will go through their required safety training prior to students ever stop stepping foot into the doorway, so that'll be done next week. And again, we're really thankful, not just to have, I was gonna say Officer Taylor, but now just Mr. Taylor, joining the team to help lead that as long, as well with Sergeant Shannon and Sergeant Williams with MPD. So we're gonna look forward to a great week next week, great time with our teachers, and looking forward to having our students back in about a week and a half.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. Good, good, been a good meeting. Any other comments or questions? If not, do I see a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Settles, have a second.
Second.
Anybody oppose it? If not, we're done. Thank you.
Four.
Good night.
I have a question, Ms. Moore.